This time I will call the regular meeting in Port Lavaca City Council to order on this Monday, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd ask everyone to please rise for the invocation. Councilman Ward, would you deliver an invocation?
Sure. That's right. Father, we thank you for this time together. We thank you, Father, for this, the protection that you have extended to this nation. Thank you, Lord, for our leaders, Washington, Texas State and local. We just ask that you continue to bless the nation, protect it from those that might seek to undermine it or to destroy it. And, Lord, we just ask that you bless this time now, God, directed by your Holy Spirit. I pray out this Father in Jesus Christ's name and for his sake.
Amen. I mean, in the pledges of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, without end, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
Honor, protect.
Flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States.
Hey, my first order of business today is to ask if there's anyone here to speak or comment to the council on an item that is not on the agenda. There's no one here from the public to make comments and we will move on to our regular agenda items. It's the, first we'll begin with the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular meeting, a review of our credit card statement, and are receiving our monthly financial highlight report. Our moves.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The F O, same sign. And none opposed, motion passes. Move to our regular action items. And we are going to rearrange it a little bit because we have several people here for agenda item number eighteen. So I'm going to call agenda item eighteen first, which is to consider resolution number R dash oh three, one, three, two, three, dash five of the city of Port Lavaca, expressing its support of the Madagorda Bay Ship Channel Expansion Project. And it has me as the presenter, but in lieu of me speaking, I'm going to ask Charles Housman, Chief Officer of our port authority to speak on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today and request the support of y'all for the widening and deepening of the Madagorda Ship Channel, which is a very important product project, not only to the port, but to the county as a whole and the city of Port Lavaca. It will not only increase the safety, three to fourfold of ships coming down that channel. It will give us the opportunity to maintain the current jobs that we have and bring new industry and create new jobs for future. Thank you.
Oh, you wanted, we left something off of the of our resolution about the fishing.
One of the, one of the things that this does is the resolution also gives us the opportunity to work through the Army Corps of Engineers in habitats that we affect. We have to come back and replace those habitats. So oysters, it's a three to one ratio. We cover a hundred acres. We have to put three hundred acres of oysters in sea grass and stuff like that. We want to work with commercial and recreational fishermen and agencies to make sure that we maintain a healthy Madagorda Bay.
Any questions for Charles?
Uh, Mr. Housman, who is we?
Port.
The port?
The port.
Let's Calhoun Port.
Yes, sir, the Calhoun Port Authority.
I just think it's a great idea because I've talked to some of the pilots and they said it's when you're contending with the currents, things like that. And if you have, and you're bringing, you know, if you've got bigger ships, you won't be able to bring them in here because unless we do the expansion, we're not going to be bringing them down.
Park this or. Be wider to depth of the channel for more maneuverability that the pilots have coming in in Friday jetties.
I just think it's.
Any system.
In this.
And one of the things is that these larger ships, if you have problems, probably. Correct me if I'm wrong, but from the research that I've done, the larger ships, the weight off of these ships is actually lower than ship sizes that are coming in currently.
Mr. House, are you?
John, go ahead.
Mr. House, what? Once all the peripheral industry starts populating our county, what is, what do you think the rate of the number of ships per day will be entering our harbor?
It probably won't increase much more than three to four. We're currently average one ship a day on average per annual. It'd probably be in the three to four shift. Somewhere in that. So that's going five to ten years down the road. I can't really predict further out, but that's, that's about what you're gonna see.
About five to ten years down the road.
Well, there've been quite a few of them coming in here recently because a couple of the pilots have said that we, you know, you get so many of them.
We average, we average right now, we average about three hundred and thirty to three hundred and thirty-five ships on an annual basis, which like I said, it's just less than one ship per day.
How many actual docking stations, or birding stations, or whatever you call it, for ships that y'all have?
Currently, I have four deep draft births. I have six large births conveyor dock. It's a shallow draft for largest. And we've got designed and permitted three new box for larger vessels to come in that will handle larger products or loads of products. And one of the things, if you look, when you leave, going across the bay out towards Point Comfort, you come across Causeway there to the left. That's actually our project that we're putting in a marsh habitat for this work that we've done at the port. So we're putting in fourteen acres of deep marsh and low marsh.
I have another question too. Like right now, I'm thinking you, you can't bring in all the ships that probably, I'm sure some have to set offshore. Some have to set and wait to come in. And, and to me, so they anchor out there, is that right?
Yes, sir. They anchor out there, but so.
To me, that would be, they're safer when they're in the port, I would think, than they are sitting out there waiting. So is this would make it, would this make it a little, I mean, widening the channel and doing all that? Would it make it more effective to where we could get the ships in and out quicker? Because I know sometimes y'all have to wait for certain tides and different things because of the fact that those channels shallower. So it would, it would make sense if it was deeper, it would allow them to come in and out easier pretty much at any time you need them to versus waiting for the tide to be right and all that. Is that correct?
That's, that is correct. I promise.
Is it, uh? So to me, it would be almost safer in a way to be able to get them in and get them out than to have them tied up out there waiting something to go wrong.
It's like, out in the water. It's like they always say, any port, any star, any.
Larry, this is a question for Larry. I've seen a couple of pictures of some of the ships with the barges and they're so close together. And then when some of the pilots talk about the currents, I keep thinking, what's gonna happen if you have a spill? And I keep thinking of East Palestine, Ohio.
Captain.
And what happened there? I don't want something like that here. That's the reason why I think widening and deepening it prevent that the currents won't be so.
Won't prevent it, it'll certainly help. The deepening, widening of the ship channel will ease the currents coming to the beginning. Right now, this, I was a Navy pilot before I came here, worked everything from submarines to aircraft carriers, read about this place, didn't believe what was happening till I came here. So this just can't be. The size of the ships that are coming in here with the natural current we have right now, the ships sometimes are barely. The captains don't understand what's going on, even though you explain it to them before you start in. And they have the right to override our commands. It's come close, but I've never had it happen. But if they were to do that, one ship, I told him, if you do that, we're gonna crash. We're gonna bust open these fuel tanks and we're gonna have to talk all over them. Because when you come in with a ship, you've got strong side tide. If there is an incident in the jetties, it's just a matter of a few hours. That the southern part of the bay is gonna be full of whatever. It's like that. And this won't prevent it, but it makes it worse. A whole lot's. And that's, that's my point of this whole thing, safety. And the insider's saying, thank you. Like Jim said, when they chose it, it would make it so much safer.
Thank you.
Charles, do you see any direct benefit to the city of Port Lavaca and to maybe our port and harbor?
The, the benefits that I can see is with some of these projected industries that could potentially come in is citizens moving into the city, but also ancillary businesses that will support these businesses and they will need spaces. They won't more in the city than they would out right in that area. So I can see it creating some more jobs here directly in the city of Port Lavaca.
Nothing directly with our harbor, though.
And the harbor, my intent is continue, I've been trying to work, well, I've been here twenty-three years, trying to work and find something to where we can coexist with this to help this harbor of refuge and city harbor to create new businesses and bring more business into those harbors. Hadn't, hadn't hit right chord on it yet, but we're, we continue to work on that.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Doc.
Is that it? You counsel? You have another question?
Actually, more questions. Matter of fact, this, this resolution of support just come on me, I think it was Wednesday, I found out about it, and I have a ton of questions to ask. I've seen all the promotional signs about the port, you know, and increasing the, the depth and width of the channel. The Corps of Engineers had, why did the Corps of Engineers hold the project up? And have they given approval at this particular point?
Yes, sir. We had, we, we were, we started this project in twenty sixteen. November of twenty nineteen, we received the chief's report, which meant that the feasibility project was finished and complete and signed off on. Got that. Twenty twenty, we were put into the Water Resource Redevelopment Act of twenty twenty and it signed off in December of twenty twenty by the president. We were fully authorized. We started then on what is called project engineering and design. Once we started project engineering design, we got to a point where we were probably ninety-five, ninety-six percent complete with that. When Core goes, wait a minute, these numbers don't match these numbers.
What numbers you talking about?
The quantity dredged under the feasibility study was twenty-one million cubic yards. When they did head, they came up with quantity of thirty-eight million. So they made an error in calculating quantities to be removed from the ship channel inside the jetties in the bay portion. And that is the reason that they have rescinded the record of decision on their environmental impact statement. It hasn't, they haven't stopped it. What they're doing is because there's an additional seventeen million cubic yards material that's gotta come out. They're going back and doing a supplemental environmental impact statement.
I see.
On the additional quantities that were there.
So widening and deepening the channel will not disturb the mercury?
No, sir. No, sir. What, what, what we had to do, all of the samples that we've taken, when mercury, for mercury to be put back or material to be put back in the bay, it's tested. Anything from point five milligrams per kilogram. If we run a test and we find that area, that area has to go out of the bay into a confined placement area and it's removed from the bay forever. In this supplemental E I S that we're doing, our, well, let me get back to the, the numbers that we actually came up with and they're gonna be on our website here. I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks. The highest, the highest quantity that we came up with was point zero four eight zero, significantly lower than that point five.
That's great.
But here's the other deal.
Anybody wants, but.
Right. But here's, here's the other thing. We've got an additional twenty-six spots that we're going to sample. Any of those areas, if they could come back, point five kilograms per kilogram or greater, then because of an agreement that we have with Alcoa, Alcoa will come in, they will continue to sample around that area to to find out exactly how big an area we're talking about. And they will come in with the dredge that has silt screens around the dredge itself. That material will be pumped into what we call dredgeway. So it will be taken out of the bay forever.
Well, that side, from what I understand, is a very fragile side in mercury. And it's just now becoming a little unstable. And I because of the amount of people that their livelihood depends on the fishing industry. And you, you've addressed that, that it's three to one. If you damage something, we're gonna replace it three times. I, I just feel like, you know, we gotta be careful about what we're doing here because I know that we brought in industry before that did not live up to their promises. And we don't want our, our beautiful bay damaged anymore than it is. And it is damaged.
Oh, no, no, sir. I, I don't disagree with that, but I, I think this is an opportunity for us to find more areas of, of, of that contamination from the mercury, from that Alcoa site and actually get it out of the bay, which in my opinion is better to get it out of the bay than to leave it there for future generations to have to address.
I talked to Mr. Robinson regarding the safety issues like Jim Ward and Jerry Smith has addressed. Of course, I want our channels to be safer. But I would like to make them safer for the size of ships we have, not to bring in larger and more numbers of ships. I think there was a study done and the Commissioners Court has that study, from what I understand, I was told that twenty percent of our short line erosion is due to, and I don't know if that's an exact quote or not, due to ship.
That's, that's, that's an incorrect statement. Okay, it's two, less than two to three percent of the erosion on Alamo, Alamo Beach, Indianola and all of that area. It's in, was in the study that Commissioner Hall had by Mark McDonald. And in that.
But you could see that would be a major concern if it was the twenty percent because you know, whether they put up more or less weight, more traffic, more traffic and.
I understand that.
One of the things, Mr. Tippett, if, if I can impose upon Charles to, to go through is maybe some of the, in the project, how they're going to be building new estuaries, new bird eye, your bird eye, an example. He spoke to us at Rotary. I wish I'd invited you.
Well, that's, that's one of the things that we're working at was or under the first iteration, they've got these placement areas offshore. And they're not gonna come up above the surface, but they're offshore placement areas, put material behind the berm, hold it. Which in, in the long term, behind that, because the silt's coming out of them, it will eventually establish sea grass on, on those areas. But one of the things that we have now that we have an additional seventeen million cubic yards material to deal with, one of the first things that we did, talk to the Colonel with Galveston District from the Corps of Engineers, and one of our priorities is, is to be able to work with these environmental groups. One of the ones that we've been working with, I've been here twenty-three years, we've been working all along, is the Audubon Society. We have a great opportunity to create several more nesting islands for greater seabirds. The Chester Island that's out there right now is probably the most prolific island rookery on the Texas Gulf Coast, but we, we have a lot of opportunity with this additional material to come back and be some of the other areas that we're looking at is potential beach, beach renourishment, beach placement areas and things like that. But we want, we don't wanna harm the bay. We want to ride, but we want to work in harmony with everything that's going on out there. It's not our intention to put any, any of the oyster or commercial fishermen out of business.
No.
We, we, we're you know, there, there's some areas in there that, that we're actually gonna place, where they supposedly gonna place material. Some of those areas, maybe one out of ten years, our oysterman is able to harvest in those areas because they're in an area. Plus, if you're chocolate bio, freshwater comes in, one of the worst enemies of the oysters, that freshwater influx coming in. And then would, uh, from other chemicals and stuff that get into the water. We have an opportunity to go to a completely different place and establish a reef that will be harvestable, harvestable year in and year out.
What about the jetties? That entrance to the Madagorda Ship Channel, from what I understand, the jetties is probably one of the most treacherous parts of the journey. Will, will that be widened as well?
Right now, there's no dredging to go on in between the jetties because when that started, it was three hundred foot, a three hundred foot bottom width. Now coming through the jetties, it's closer to a thousand feet where you had a three to one slope coming off the edges of jetties. It's now like this, which is what makes navigating through there, because you don't have that slope. If something were to happen to a vessel coming through those jetties, they can now get to the brimstone. That's, that's what we don't want. I'm trying to remember the exact year. I think it was twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, we got approval from the Army Corps of Engineers on what's called, they declared the Madagorda Ship Channel jetties a designed efficiency. Which means that it, the design's not working to the way that it was supposed to because you come in, you're two thousand feet apart and then you neck down coming in, and that bottleneck is what creates renewals principle. It's that water gets through there and speeds up. So over thirty percent of the time, you can find currents in excess of five knots going through those jetties. I just found out that the, the port in the Madagorda Ship Channel jetties just got four point nine five million dollars to start the process of investigating the remedy and design for taking that bottleneck out. And then flanging on the bay side because with that, what it will end up doing is will bring the currents that currently now are all over the jet, in between the jetties. It's supposed to bring those currents to the centerline of the jetties and help navigation for the pilots.
But they're, they're going to do a four point nine million dollar study on that?
No, it's not a study. It's, it's actually beginning of the design.
Okay. So that, they're, they're thinking about making it more navigable. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's for safety.
I'm all for safety. Wanting to see, I just don't want the, the larger ships here. I'd rather have a safe place for the current ships to navigate. And I don't want the larger ships here. And that's, that's, it's gonna bring, you know, once that large navigable that accommodates the super tankers and so forth, once it hits here, we're one of the last ports on the Gulf that has not expanded. It will, will either be, will be another Houston Ship Channel or Baytown. We're not gonna be a rock pool. And I don't, that's not, I want more recreational development. I know we're thinking about developing the downtown area. We're, we're talking about developing over here on Commerce Street. We're talking about, what a beautiful park we have. Um, I, I want us to have, you know, be attracted to fishermen and hunters and tourist industry. Not be another Baytown or Houston Ship Channel. I'm not saying I'm, I'll never support this. I just need more information. It hit me last Wednesday. And I've been scrambling to try and find out as much as I can. Thank you.
No problem. Whatever. If you wanna give me a call, Matt, sit down, we can talk. We'll find all, all the questions that you have. I'm more than happy to do that. And just by the way, these, the ships that are designed, yes, they're bigger, but they're nowhere near, near a B L C C tanker. These are mid-range, they're Aframax. The length of the channel is designed for us about eight fifty by one forty-five.
So that's not a super tank?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, the company that is, and I'm, I think I know the name of it, but it's coming to develop the coastline and, and load oil out. There's a pipeline coming from Permian Basin and Eagle Ford. Am I wrong about that?
Yes, sir. Max Midstream, yes, sir. They, they, they're not connected to the Permian yet, but they, they are connected into the Eagle Ford.
Uh, are we going to offer them tax abatements as well?
Have not requested any thus far.
Who has not?
Max.
Okay.
Paying for the project. Paying for the project.
Paying for the table.
Why me?
The hundred and twenty million dollar bond that.
No, sir. No, sir, that.
You didn't do that?
We did a bond, but see, when you're reading things in the paper, a lot of time, it's not exactly like it seems. They, they made it seem like that hundred.
See, that's some of the questions I have.
So the hundred and twenty million was for widening and deepening. No, sir, that was to pay for the infrastructure that they're actually building in or have built in Jackson County and for.
Infrastructure in Jackson County, a hundred and twenty million dollar bond to pay for that?
Yes, sir. They've already invested over two hundred million dollars into the process. Thank you. Thank you.
I say something. Going back to safety. Captain Robinson, you know, we, we're talking about mercury. Mercury was here big time before anybody discovered it.
Aye.
But in your research, I'd like for you to find a number people and or fish that have died from murder. And the safety of that channel, the jetties, one ship with the bad material in a matter of minutes will destroy not only Madagorda Bay, but Lavaca Bay also will have a dead sea. And in, oh, worse than mercury, but mercury's there, alcohol, I think there, we know that. And they're trying to get rid of it. But I've never been able to get a figure of people or fish that have died from mercury of all the years.
That's mine. You probably won't because when they do an autopsy, they typically don't look for mercury levels in a person's body. They say this person died from cancer. This person died from whatever that may be mercury related, but they don't look for the mercury. So you're not gonna see that.
Any other questions for Charles?
We make a motion.
I'm sure, and it needs to be signed by everybody.
Okay, well, we, they need to vote on it. So we'll need a motion to approve the resolution as presented in the.
I make a motion that we accept the resolution as stated.
All right, we have a motion and a second approving resolution number R dash oh three, one, three, two, three, dash five, a resolution in the city of Port Lavaca, Texas, expressing its support for the deepening and widening of widening project of Madagorda Bay Ship Channel as, as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign?
That's me.
Unopposed? Motion passes, resolution passes and.
Are we, are we supposed to sign it? Just doesn't sign it?
I'll just put an A on it.
Thank you for coming, Captain.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for your, appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I will.
Yeah.
I think we will. Thank you.
Definitely. After he's had some conversation, I think.
We don't.
Yes, sir.
You know, is there a timing? Have to be this month? You have to be.
There's some timing.
That's what I was thinking, because that's another. New discussion. I was wondering if you wanted to have a conversation with Mr. Housman and see if maybe we change. New discussion, I was wondering if you wanted to have a conversation with Mr. Houseman and see if maybe we change your mind to bring this back. Back with our council?
I'll do it. That was in a lightning interview just then, and I learned some things.
But.
Those are good questions.
No, they're very good questions, so, but I'm just curious, do you think, I mean, would that be of any benefit to? To postpone?
Uh. You know, we sign it later. Right now, pretty, yeah, until I talk to him, for sure, I'm not gonna sign.
Yeah, it takes a while. He's, he's done his study, we've done ours, but, uh, he's. Okay, I work together.
You know what? That's what makes a county unique. Everybody always agrees. And that's, that's why people are elected the way they are. Because we all have our own opinions, well, our own decision on what we feel, and that's how it's supposed to be. I, I give Alan respect for having the courage to question that, so. You know? I appreciate you doing that. So I decided that's.
The best copy of the resolution.
Around, well, it's.
I'm for signatures.
Here for the people of La Vaca and. County.
Um, I don't want to make another mistake.
Yeah. Because it's like.
You want to put name?
Do I need to write anything on there?
You can just write name.
Okay. You want to hold off soon?
Or, or, I mean. Or, or just leave it blank. Just leave it blank in that way, I mean, no change.
Yeah, that might be better.
Your office.
Famously, I will. He's off this way for spring break, so he could, he can go talk to me.
I mean, he's always out there.
It's kind of included in that, uh. Paragraph six, seven. The impact on the bay that Mr. Barry's.
This house, this name. H A U S. M A N A.
H A U S M A N A.
That, I got it. I don't have this title.
It's a port director. It's got CPA next to it.
There is a CPA else. The port director.
Okay. And. Thank you.
Right, we all are doing that. We'll get back to our regular agenda.
We don't, we don't need to send that to anybody, that's.
A resolution.
That resolution. Okay.
Request. Right back from the beginning, agenda item number one, consider the request of Pastor Mike Bender from the Cowboy Fellowship Church of Port La Vaca. For the use of the Bayfront Peninsula Park Pavilion. For an Easter Sunday sunrise service on April ninth, twenty twenty-three, from six A M to twelve P M. Wave any fees associated with the event. Going to present this.
Uh, Wayne is not here, I can.
I'll make the motion that we accept it. I'll say.
The request is in.
As presented in the past.
Done this for him a couple of years already, so. I make the motion.
I'll pack it.
No.
What? Yeah. All right, that is.
And so we have a motion and a second approving the request of Pastor Mike Bender from the Cowboy Fellowship. At Port La Vaca Church for the use of the Bayfront Pavilion at, for an Easter Sunday sunrise service as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. None opposed, motion passes. Hey, the agenda item number two, consider request of our Lady of the Gulf Catholic Church to host a walking procession on Good Friday, April seventh. Twenty twenty-three from twelve P M to two P M. Assistance with traffic control from the police department and waiver of any fees.
Move.
I wanted to say something. But these are ones that we.
You have to wave it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second approving the request of our Lady of the Gulf Catholic Church to host a walking procession on Good Friday, April seventh, twenty twenty-three. As presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. None opposed, motion passes. Agenda item number three, consider agreement. For the temporary closure of the state right away. With Texas Department of Transportation to close the main street. Between Virginia and Commerce Streets for Iguana Fest from.
Six A M.
Saturdays, April first, twenty twenty-three, to noon on Sunday, April second, twenty twenty-three.
Come over.
So, did you want to say something?
I don't have to. A lot of this is back, uh, it was the first event.
Second it.
We got long agenda.
So it will be in the paper, but I think they can work that out. Okay, so we have a motion and a second approving the, uh, agreement. Temporary closure of the state, Texas Department of Transportation. Uh, between Main Street and Virginia Street for Iguana Fest as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, none opposed, motion passes. Right, agenda item number four, consider temporary closure of Colorado and Guadalupe Street between Railroad and Live Oak Streets. April.
On Saturday, April first, twenty twenty-three, for Iguana Fest.
So move. Second.
Okay, it's repetitive, Jack. We've done this for how many years?
I mean.
It's Iguana Fest.
It's the same as well. Best was canceled for.
Oh, it is, dude. Okay, so we have a motion and a second approving the temporary closure of Colorado and Guadalupe Street between Railroad and Live Oak Streets. On Sat- or Saturday. April first, twenty twenty-three, for Iguana Fest, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, none opposed, motion passes. Right, agenda item number five, consider moving.
Juneteenth celebration scheduled for June sixteenth, June eighteenth. Twenty twenty-three from George Adams Park to the Bayfront Peninsula Park and waive any fees associated with the event except for the alcohol and park permit.
There's a first. Yeah, there's a first, isn't it?
That was.
I'm, I would like to ask you a question somewhere. This, this is different.
Yeah, where did that come about?
Now, with members of the C C I A and Wilkins. We're looking based on the construction that'll be going on around the park at time, and.
Yeah.
So rather than sneak up and all of the last minute have to move it. We've kind of all agreed that it's probably best to go ahead and make that decision now.
Well, I have a lot more room, that's for sure.
They will, and I think they're looking at some ways to maybe include more in the community.
Yeah.
Having the larger space and that type of stuff. I think it's gonna be a really good event. We've already met once and. Walked the park and will be. Yeah. Meeting down there at the end of April to kind of start laying some things out.
I like that. I think it's a good idea. I'm just curious how that came about.
That's good.
Introduce folks to be permanently over there. It's been at George Adams.
But because Joey was in our way.
Thank you.
I'm starting with it. I don't have a second.
We have Jerry.
I'll make a motion.
You make a motion, I guess so.
Okay.
Good. In second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, uh. Approving the moving of the Juneteenth celebrations scheduled for June sixteenth to June eighteen, twenty twenty-three, from George Adams Park. To Bayfront Peninsula Park and waiver of any fees associated with the event except for the alcohol permit. Alcohol in park permit fee, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. And none opposed, motion passes. Really, I really want to bring the whole community in on the Juneteenth celebration.
Yeah, seventy-eight.
Great event.
Big spot. It's always gotten so crowded down there that I think that keeps people away.
Yeah.
A lot of times, so. If they put it in a nice open area where people drop by and see it, I think they'll, uh, they'll get a bigger crowd down there.
Parking's pretty restricted.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and if it's parked, it is restricted during the day. Imagine at night.
Oh, yeah.
So crowded.
That's good.
And to agenda item number six, receive certification of city secretary that the candidate for single district number three. Position in the May sixth, twenty twenty-three, general officers election is unopposed. Andy?
That is correct.
Alan's done such a great job.
Yes. So, uh, this is my certification that. Uh, single district number three, right now with, uh, Alan Tippett. Uh, was unopposed. And that's just part of the election process. I have to do this before we go into the next agenda meeting. Y'all are just receiving this, you don't have to, I don't, I don't need a. Uh, we don't need a motion or anything. I'm just presenting.
Okay.
My certification, so.
About six and seven? Seven, yeah.
Seven, eight, magic.
Admin calls you.
We accept seven.
Agenda item number seven, consider adopting an order canceling part of the May sixth, twenty twenty-three general officers election, specifically the single district number three position. Declaring unopposed candidate Alan Tippett duly elected as councilman.
Congratulations.
That is, okay, and, and in this, we are ordering the cancellation.
Right. There are a motion.
In ordering the cancellation of the.
Eight, six, twenty twenty-three, general officers election, specifically the single district number three position. Declaring un- unopposed candidate Alan Tippett as due duly elected as councilman.
Yeah, now, uh, now councilman, let me explain, uh, you are duly elected, but we won't do the house until after. The election.
After the election, okay, that's fine.
After we canvass and everything else, then, then.
When the other ones.
Yeah, right, I understand that.
Yeah.
Do we have to sign something?
Uh, only Jack signs this. The world.
We have a motion and a second.
Oh, is, is that all? You're just in this. That is correct, yes, can you pass that? Sign it and pass that on, please.
Uh, we do have a motion and a second, uh, ordering cancelling a part of the. May sixth. Twenty twenty-three general officer election as.
Bennett.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Yeah. And let me get, because that one, since all of y'all are here, I mean. Take advantage of that. We'll pass that on, please. And congratulations.
Thank you. Well run it.
You've got a run of the commander.
Signing. Well, it's been a good one.
Hmm.
Those are interesting.
All those rubber calls.
Thank you. We've did already. You know.
You're done with this part, you know?
Yeah. Yes.
You want to, agenda item number eight.
Consider lease agreement with Calhoun County for use of electronic voting equipment for the city of Port La Vaca general officers election held on the uniform date of May sixth. Twenty twenty-three.
I'll move. Like it.
And motion and a second approving lease agreement with Calhoun County for use of the electronic voting. Equipment. As presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
So, is it still state law that we have to have electronic?
I think so. It has to be made available.
Yeah. We're still allowing that.
Are you not sure why, but are you officially voting now?
I'll vote for it.
Okay.
You can vote. Well, we have to provide.
Does anybody ever use it?
Yes.
I have seen them.
Every once in a while, not that many.
I always do the paper ballot. I don't trust the machines.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't use that much.
Everything's okay unanimously.
Yes.
Had any worries.
Move to agenda item number nine, consider resolution number R dash oh, three, one, three, two, three, dash, one, E of the city of Port La Vaca to appoint election judges. For the city's general officer election held on the uniform date of May sixth, twenty twenty-three, man.
Move.
Do you have anything to add?
Everything's under state.
Okay, they, they, now this year, we're having all new judges. We have, uh. Augustine Rojas as the presiding judge. Uh, Jamie Delgado is the alternate judge, and then on the E V B B, which is the early voting. Ballot board or central counting station. Uh, Michael Moller, now he has been our judge. I think two different times. Uh, and then Mary Lou Thar- Tharland as an alternate, uh, in case Mr. Moller can come in.
And Mandy did, don't they, they can reflect like a extra weekend or something for early voting or something, or not?
Uh, we haven't extended, we have Saturday, and that was part of the election order.
Okay.
We do have Saturday from nine to two.
Okay. That's good.
Yeah. Legislature changed that last, uh, last time. To where we have to add that to, to the order. Instead of, uh, just putting a seventy-two hour notice out there.
A second.
Yes, sir, I got it.
And for the folks volunteering and, and taking care of our elections.
Yeah. Yeah, we do appreciate them coming. It, it takes time.
Yeah.
It's very dedicated.
Yes, we have a motion and a second approving resolution number R dash. Oh, three, one, three, twenty-three, dash, one, E. Of the city of Port La Vaca to appoint election judges for the general officer election.
Sure on that one.
As presented.
Appointment of the judges.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And none opposed, motion passes, resolution passes.
Just, just give them one minute, because I'm gonna, I need that signed since they're all together.
Changing subjects anyway.
Yeah.
We have one.
Our reporter can group all those in one. One paragraph in the.
I didn't have this. Oh, this is if you go to P M, then. Oh, P M. I want you to add one. You don't have to disrupt the meeting to go drink. We needed that, so I asked him questions. Now, I've got, oh, you dry.
That's what they're there for. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to agenda item number ten. Consider recommendation of the city's. Court Security Committee to contract with U S Court Security Concepts LLC. For a security assessment of City Hall for a fee of five thousand dollars and consider authorization. From council to pay this expenditure from the building security fund. Jody?
Uh, Mayor Council, uh, the Court Security Committee recently met. As recommending to contract with U S Court Security Concepts LLC of San, and San Angelo. Uh, to perform a security assessment. This assessment will be not only of City Hall. Um, chambers where, where it also serves the courtroom. But also the entirety of City Hall. I did last week spoke with Mr. Randy Harris of U S C S. See, and he can perform this assessment and prepare a report for fees by thousand dollars. Um, now, if, you know, we would later want him to come back and make the presentation to council, there would be an additional fifteen hundred dollar. A fee at that time. Um, at this time, I don't think we would need that additional. On the Court Security Committee's requesting council approval to use court security funds to pay this consultant fee. And, and, uh, staff confirms and recommends council approve this expenditure to come out of the court security funds. And in your packet is a co- copy of their proposal and reference a website.
We didn't do that before, Jody. Done this before.
No, not not of this, not a no.
Yeah.
We have not, there's been, they're talking everything, but um we need to do that, yes.
Uh mostly we authorize the five thousand dollar payment. As a representative of the security committee.
I'll say it could be.
We have a motion. Could just tend to come and. If you can write a report.
No, we'll get the report if we wanted him to come back and get his presentation.
And uh thank you.
Always nice to say uh.
Wait a minute. This for the court security committee to contract with the city council.
Counsel has to approve the court.
He has authorization, but yeah, I mean, we're just asking authorization, use the money from the fund, pay for us.
Okay, so we have motion in the second authorizing the. The use of. Expend the use of. Five thousand dollars to pay the fee for the assess security assessment at city hall. From the from the.
Court security fund.
From the, it's a building security fund.
It is the building security fund.
From the building security fund.
Yes, sir.
And. Help pay the.
City's court security committee.
Contract with the U S security concepts or the security assistance in y'all, is that right?
Yeah, we're we're contracting. Uh we're contracting with U S uh court security concepts, okay? And paying for for it from the building and security fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what that's what the authorization is.
That's the motion.
Cause that's a motion.
So we have a motion in a second uh. Approving the.
We don't need to go through that space.
Come on, so all in favor say aye. Any opposed same sign. And opposed, motion passed. It's it's used in me as a city council as the authority to contract, not the.
Well, no, council, it's authorization for council. To. That's just legislature saying.
Yeah.
Unless unless you.
Recommendations is from the committee.
And there is money in the fund.
Opposed, it's not the contract, contract's not with me.
Alright, so we'll move to agenda item number eleven. Consider recommendation of this city's court security. Committee to amend the city of Port Lavaca H R and workplace policies. After five compensation, section five point oh seven incentive. Pay program by adding certification pay for court bailiffs at fifty dollars per month. And consider authorization from counsel to pay this expenditure from the building security fund.
What do we do now?
Yes.
Use a police officer or what?
Okay. Yeah, now now legislature has decided that it's not enough to be a peace officer. The bailiffs have to be certified now.
So it's extra training plus.
Nice of them to come up with all these new ideas and we gotta pay for it.
Yeah, yes, yeah, I mean, that's that's. So they they've been doing this and I think the change was like in twenty eighteen is when they made it. And so the bailiffs had asked if there was any way that they could get. Cause we are drawing them away from their regular duties and you know, if there was any kind of incentive. So uh the court committee. Judge Pettis chairs the uh. The court security committee and so he he asked uh Councilman Denton myself to meet with. The city manager and 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 H R. Uh and Susan uh came in also. Uh and we do have an analysis there that the court. Uh the building security fund will sustain fifty dollars a month, you know, for. I think we have three, three certified bailiffs.
So the question there is if uh so well, we have two, the ve- reached the training, but we only have one that actually. Is a bailiff, so if you don't actually perform as a bailiff, would you still get the certification?
Yes.
You would.
Yeah, I mean, if if you've got the certification, it's a certification.
So we're gonna pay three people fifty bucks a piece a month. Whether they have to work or not, is that right?
See, that's that's an issue with all of our certification pay, I guess, right? Why would they get paid?
Yeah, we've run into that.
In case we need them as a backup, we have them.
Yeah.
We're.
Yeah.
Well, how many times do they meet for month, there's a court meet?
I made once a week.
But are they a part of that committee that meets or not? Okay.
Well, not necessarily.
I was gonna say, at least if they met at a meeting, what's a.
One that is certified? Is that what you?
We have three.
Or two, cause one left, but we have one that said he's too busy to do it and so I'm just curious.
So if he's not working and he's not using his certification, he shouldn't get paid. And I mean, the way we are set up is if you are certi- well, then, I mean. If if he, if we are not, if he's gonna be, we're not gonna use him at all, at all. And then we would, we wouldn't, you know, he would just be excluded from the pool altogether and he wouldn't get certification pay. But if, cause you know, if somebody gets a certification, but then it's one we don't need it, we're not gonna necessarily. Pay it just because somebody went out and get it, not it if we don't need it. But I mean, you would think we would probably need more than one to have a backup.
Yeah.
But um I think that's that's a separate issue than than this, than the policy, that's something we've gotta work out and staff.
Okay.
I I think we'll at least allow for two, you know, so you do have a backup to the main one or whatever.
If they actually do it.
I was gonna say, why would you pay a third person if he's already said he's too busy to do it anywhere?
It's not going to do.
Let's let the chief time in.
I I'm not on the committee, but um one of them went through the third cert. As far as that goes, so you actually probably just can be paying one.
Okay.
One that's been certified in the past and he would fill in as needed as far as. But you know, Lieutenant Ramos is gonna be basically your. Um yes, we did lose um Sergeant Claire as far as that goes and Sergeant Claire and Ramos actually went through the third certification. As far as that goes.
Are we gonna maybe get into a second person though?
Oh, I said Lieutenant Sales can fill in and he doesn't have the third cer- certification as far as that goes, but it may be.
Okay.
So your main one, of course, will be Lieutenant Ramos.
With this, what's what's so hard about being a bailiff?
Yeah.
I don't understand.
There's a certification.
Uh yeah, no, there's a certification for everything, so what does a bailiff do, he just kinda stand around and he hands some paperwork? Well, and he's there probably, hey, somebody gets.
We've been here when they have gotten hours.
I I know it's um.
Put him on the ground.
It's hard with all the active shooter um situations and stuff like that, they really, really. You know, hammer down as far as getting training and certification.
See, about how many hours a month does a police officer work?
A police officer work?
For you, like an average, an hourly month?
So uh.
Forty-sixty hours.
Twenty-nine hundred and twelve hours.
Eighty-six and eighty-six, so you've got.
A hundred and seventy-two hours. So you figure fifty dollars uh uh divided by or fifty dollars broken down over that a hundred and seventy-two uh hours. You you were talking about maybe fifty cents an hour, twenty cents an hour, that's not a big deal.
Well, they're only in court for a couple hours.
Yeah, but you you.
Yeah.
You have that certified person for twenty cents an hour more.
Yeah.
Or something like that.
So and that's that's consistent with like fire uh uh inspector, you know, that that's where the fifty dollars came from.
No, I I agree, we should, we should pay them that if that's, I mean, for their time. What is it, somebody calculated, I don't know, I thought somebody might might have calculated, I didn't calculate it.
I I have a motion that we uh it's. When the man, the uh. The workplace policy to add certification pay for court bailiffs at fifty dollars a month.
Second, seconds.
Motion in second to amend the city Port Lavaca H R and workplace policies.
And take it out of the building.
Certification.
And take it out of the building, security part, sorry.
Included certification pay to bailiff. Authorized payment of this expense from the building. Twenty-nine as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. And then opposed, motion. Say, I read that.
Yes.
The other one is, they recommend us to contract, I didn't. Thought they were going to contract, so it's been given. But we'll move on to agenda item number twelve. Consider addition of the new job class title of police cadet. Within the city's compensation plan.
Let's do something new.
Well, um Mayor Councils, this is basically housekeeping as far as it goes. Um we have been um uh basically sponsoring cadets through here. But we discovered we didn't have actual job description and actual um when we're paying them an hourly rate. But uh what rate?
So they were being paid a salary to go to to cadet school or to train?
We had maybe one, uh and of course he didn't. Kind of pan out, but in order, like I said, it's more of a housekeeping, it's just like.
Can you, can you define? What is a cadet, define cadet?
So this is someone that the city is going to pay to actually. Their their actual jobs. And then after that, once they're certified by T E O, then of course they come on.
Essentially, and when we found that we we need to do this to keep up with everybody else that's doing it.
Yeah.
How many uh out of the cadets would help pay those first? Have we been pretty good about you or staying those or, I mean, you make a deal that they gotta stay for so long, right? For how long?
Um, two years now.
Years, okay.
We did have a three-year contract, but we not.
Okay. Pretty much promising two years, just to help them go through the training and become certified or whatever. That way they can't just skip out once they get certified and go see you, thanks for the training.
And if they do, they have to pay a special.
Yeah.
But we're, what they pay back is the reimbursement from the academy and usually running between thirty-five and thirty-six hundred.
Actually had people pay us back.
Yes.
We do get some money?
We have, we have, we have collected from.
Hundred percent?
So there was um. One cadet that we had um that uh. But they hadn't paid back.
So one other question on the on the pay range, did I I noticed it's higher than the firefighter engineer who's an actual full-time, cause you know. Real position as opposed to cadet, which is a pre-position, is this range come from something or?
The the range actually came from what most departments are paying a cadet for. Which is anywhere from, I think it was sixteen to eighteen dollars. And so that was in that range right there. Which was, it starts off at seventeen fifty-four an hour. So that's that's the the, I I guess as far as to figure out the range, that's what we.
Based on the prevailing range of what others.
Would you need a range for a cadet position, would it just be one, one salary until they graduate? And then they become an officer, right?
Um, I mean, that that's an idea too, um it it was just to hammer down because we've never really had a position of.
Yeah, I think we were just trying to fit it into our existing.
I just, I mean, to me, it doesn't seem like they should get paid more than a fireman who's like a full-time fire, I mean, cause they're in a training. Position, it's not a lot of money, but it's.
That's, I got another question. Out of say, say just the last two years, how many, roughly how many cadets have we spoken?
Yeah, sponsored. Four, I wanna send.
And out of those four, have we, and of course, they're, they gotta go for two years. So. Is that, I mean. We retain. Are still, are they still here, I guess, my question, are they still thinking about staying?
We have one.
Out of four, one stayed. And that's a shame, really. I I mean, I'm in favor of seeing that happen, it's just, you know, I was hoping the results would be be a little better, you know. Yeah, you know, that's kind of a letdown a little bit, you know.
I think considering it's uh such a crucial job. And maybe we need to raise the salary so we can keep people longer.
Is it the salary that we're not, we're losing them all or is it just a small town?
Uh sometimes.
Spied out all the details.
You got a host of things as far as. This pay uh factoring, absolutely. But there's also, we are in an interesting part, are are interesting time that I've never seen. And so we go to the academy and and most of them are sponsored by the Victorian Victoria County. Or are starting those guys off, but they are from twenty-one, twenty-two dollars an hour.
Yeah.
Um so when they graduate and if there's, if they didn't get ate up by a bigger department, you may have three of those left from Victoria. So of course, they're gonna go down the line. Where, what do you offer, we offer twenty-eight dollars now. And then what do you have, you offer twenty-three, what do you offer, twenty-one dollars, they're gonna go to the bigger one as far as that goes. Um but you also have, you know, as far as opportunity, it's, they can go anywhere. Next, um it there's your bigger markets, Austin, they're hurting, Travis County is hurting, everyone is hurting. So as far as to try to be marketable to our local academies, which is gonna be Delmar, Victoria and now Wharton. You know, there, that's something to actually uh. Hopefully draw a man as far as. We do have one that we spoke to today, that's from Delmar. Um so, I mean, it's it's starting to to. Kinda catch a little bit of.
Oh, I guess if we can helps, continue to help sponsor them, even if they have to give us their two years. That's better than nothing, of course, if they drop out, well, then they gotta reimburse us or whatever.
So what? Okay, we. When somebody completes, what keeps them from paying it back and going, going to work for another agency?
Well.
Thirty-six hundred dollars.
Yeah.
But we pay them while they're in school.
We use that same concept. On how many hours in two years that a uh officer works and. What's that thirty-six hundred break down to over uh per hour? And.
But no, but. When I went to school, I didn't get paid more than what I was projected, I mean, I don't think, I think. Vomit, I'm just trying to say what.
No, no, I I I just think we're paying them too much as a, as a student of the academy.
Well, like I said, it's, I I basically.
There's no well to it, when you were.
I'm just trying to think it, I'm I'm just trying to think on terms.
You're gonna have enough while you're going to school or you work.
Sixteen an hour. That's what, they pay him that and then of course, there's no guarantee they've got a uh for most of job, but they have to then go to units and. And try out in different units and then, of course, if a unit wants to pick them up, then they can pick them up, but theoretically, they can leave them out there and be. Uh contract if they want to, but I'm just saying, they pay them around, I wanna say, what it used to be like fifteen, fifteen or so an hour. But I don't know what that is.
So every time you're talking about a job like uh Armond policeman. E M S, those things, those guys, those people are very important. And it's something that we need to make sure that we take care of them because it's not like. Most of the other jobs, you know.
Couldn't pay me enough to be a policeman, I don't care if you paid me a hundred thousand dollars a year, I would not be a policeman. Cause I don't wanna be a target for some nitwit. So for about a dollar fifty an hour extra over the two-year period. Figuring four thousand some odd hours that that officer will likely work. It'd be a dollar fifteen an hour that we paid him to go to the academy and be an officer for two years. That's the commitment. That's what. Then anything beyond that. Uh, it's gravy for us. But what is the total investment in a cadet from the time they go on? Paying them through school and then all that. What 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 kind of an investment do we have in those cadets?
Right, so if you're just talking about the academy alone. Uh, of course, the tuition is anywhere from thirty five to thirty six. If you pay them at seventeen, eighteen dollars an hour, you're going to look into anywhere from fifteen to twenty. Um, with with the benefits, all that as far as an actual.
How long does it take to get? I mean, was it a six month?
It's six months.
But see, when you start figuring the costs, it's like I asked Colin. Joe. And Wayne, how much we spent like with Wayne for certification that they needed to get? Or firemen or policemen? And the money that we have spent over the fifteen, twenty years, we're talking thousands and thousands of dollars. And if they, if we can't keep them. You know, I I still think that police, firemen, E M S. These people need. They need, they need the compensation because it's a dangerous job. And they need to be compensated for that.
Yeah, but Jim, you know as well as I do. That there's always people that think the grass is greener on those side of the fence. They're going to go try the other side of the fence. It don't matter what line I want to. Fifty cents an hour. That's society.
That's 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 society, but you can't just say this, let's just kick it out because. Everybody's going to be like that.
I'm in favor of what we do. I'm a little disappointed that we don't have a percentage, you know, like see. Well, I think you got a lot of these officers, you know, they go through the training and do all this, and then they come on, do their two years or whatever, but they're always looking for the. Brighter side, you know, this is small town USA.
There you go.
They're they're looking. Young officers, they're looking for. Uh, you know, things to do.
That's the reason we need to widen and deepen the canal, the channel over here so we get more people in and more homes, so that.
Okay, alright, I'm I'm done. I don't see the relationship between the channels.
Entertaining a motion.
I just think the cadet pays a little high.
I've already made the motion. And. Colin.
If you can make the motion, then you can have discussion. That's in the Roberts rules.
Yeah.
So.
It's actually when you have.
That's the really when you have the discussion.
Until we both call for it.
Until the votes call for it.
Okay, so the motion is to add.
So.
Compensation plan, the title.
These cadets with job description and pay as.
That's the motion to to has discussion. You can discuss.
Yeah, I just wanted.
Just, I just think the the uh the cadet pays a little high. If it's higher than the our police, I mean, our fire department, where is it higher than the fire? I guess I lost.
Firefighters range is sixteen.
Now, of course, they don't get any kind of benefits, right? No kind of benefit.
Okay.
Well, they do get benefits.
Yeah.
It's okay.
To work study. And and I got paid, but I didn't get any benefits. And I didn't even get. Close to what I was going to my projected amounts. Of course, I know this was many, many, many years ago, but I still went through work study and I still got paid. But I yeah, I don't know what I was going to make. That's.
I think it's based off of, you know, as far as the work, um. I think we're basing this one off of a eighty hour schedule. I think the firefighter is a little bit different as far as.
Oh. Yeah, because the firefighter is based on twenty nine, twelve hours.
Space talk.
And that would, that would be, uh, or does it say? Uh, I don't have that.
I'm not too sure what as far as fire and they work, but I know it's up for. It's a different work schedule as far as.
Yeah, because their theirs would just be a forty, basically, the debt's going to be like a forty hour week. So that's going to be uh. Twenty eight hours. Yeah, that and some, um, I mean. Susan not here, but I don't. So they're, I mean, a full time employees. Yeah, I mean, they would be paid for, um. Yeah, be a full time employee at a reduced rate from what once, once they get. They count for. Officer than they're paying.
No.
For twenty two, thirty six.
Skilled positions, all the chemical plant. Businesses are paying tuition and paying students to to commit and go through these programs.
I mean, this is the time we're in.
That's basically.
Three years. So since I brought, how about moving to budget this year and we reevaluate our salaries, then we're probably going to be raising other salaries anyway. Get this in detail of that. A couple of months from now anyways.
Down a little better.
Not only we can the twenty nine hundred.
Yeah.
Maybe go ahead and prove this now and then we'll reevaluate the.
Yeah.
I mean, the tradition is.
What you're saying, and I don't think that would be.
No, that that wouldn't be right.
It's no, 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 it's okay.
That's no, that I don't think that's the case.
That's all right. I think it's it's based on.
Is it two years seven still?
Two years.
That's a dream.
That's the contract, right?
Did it say three years?
I think uh two years is appropriate.
Yeah, you're pushing it if you go over two.
The way it is is the first year, it's a hundred percent reimbursement. And then if they leave after twelve months, then that's.
Once once we certify, that's what we.
The dollars. They don't, they don't.
They can't get reimbursement until we actually, they actually give us. There's no reimbursement. The only thing that we're on now is because six months since they don't ask is just the salary.
So they're paying for it. We're just giving them a spell.
It's going through the academy. They're writing. Right, we reimburse them, reimburse them for the academy. Certified.
We don't pay the academy directly for their training. They're paying for their training, for giving us.
Right, we changed that um from the last.
So it was contract sets? I didn't, I didn't read it that.
The contract. Um.
I can afford this.
So there's a contract. There's a few different ways it can be done. So if somebody's in the academy now, which we have one that's in there. Um. Then once they get certified, then they can get reimbursed because they've already reimb, they've already paid. Okay. There is another contract where we hire. Before and then we pay for uh, we pay for the academy.
Okay.
This is say, over the summer, it starts in the fall. Hey, we're going to go with you. We're going to see. This one that we're dealing with now, as far as talking about, is that they're already in there.
On their own.
Correct.
Yeah.
So someone who's already in it, then we're going to start paying them as a cadet, right?
So if we hired the one that I talked to today, um, we pay him a salary as well as seventeen, eighteen dollars an hour, whatever the case may be. He won't get as far as the tuition reimbursement for the academy until after he graduates. He presents us with the certification from the state. Then the city will cut him a check for the reimbursement, which would be about thirty five, thirty six hundred. So that thirty five, thirty six hundred dollars is basically a substantial contract as far as that goes for two years. So if he, they have to let him go, leave, whatever the case may be. Then they have to pay as far as thirty five hundred back and it's a percentage as far as time goes. So I think it it knocks down from after, I think, six months, it was seventy five after a year.
It was just two.
Two years.
Twelve months or anything after twelve months is fifty and before. That so, so if they're in the academy now and we bring them on now. They get, they start getting paid, that pay, or is it re retroactive back to the first day of academy?
It was start from the day that we hired.
I heard it was, okay.
Okay, well, when, oh, when you started the academy back in, they may, no, we're not going to, no, it's the day that.
And read is the contract, was like that?
There's multiple contracts.
Multiple, okay.
You really, we have our own case by case basis.
These contracts is different?
Depending on the scenario.
Depending on the scenario.
Yeah, and that's, that's fine. There's always good to have different negotiating.
That's the best way to.
Keep the people coming in. I just, I I was just sitting here thinking it'd be nice if we could. Figure it out, you know, how to keep them here. But like, you know, what was talking about. You know, I mean, first of all, you know, it's more expensive here than it is in Victoria to live here. I mean, prices of rent houses is tougher higher here. You know, there's a lot of things, so maybe that's. How we're losing them. The other barriers. I know that. I was like, y'all probably know that. Also that there's teachers here that work at at the high school. They have to, they live in Victoria, they can't find housing here. So that, that's a road trip back and forth to Victoria, which is a cost. But anyways, I I appreciate. Yeah.
Alright, we have a motion and a second.
I have a second.
We want to make sure that we're paying our people. Off the board equally and not. Uh, not just. Randomly pay. People more and not consider the other. Uh, departments and. They're they're doing equal work. A vigorous.
Colin, you seconded the motion.
I'll second it.
Yes. The motion and the second uh adding the title of police cadet. To the city's compensation. Job script, the job description and its pay grade as we've been investing. All in favor say aye. You oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Want to pose, motion passes. If that Mandy.
Yes.
Right. Thank you, Colin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, you want to talk about homestead tax exemptions? We'll move to agenda item number thirteen, consider the city of Port Lava's annual optional homestead tax exemption. Within Calhoun County Appraisal District for the twenty twenty three tax year.
I will take this, um. The Calhoun County Appraisal District has asked that we notify the appraisal district no later than April first. There's the changes to um our twenty twenty three uh exemptions for the county twenty three tax year. We currently have um homestead at ten quid cents and sixty five and over at ten thousand dollars. Um, and staff is recommending that we just keep it the same. There's some additional information in the packet. If anybody's got questions overall then, but. Um, we recommend just stay the way. We've been the last uh. Years actually.
And moves that we keep the exemption as.
That's recommendation.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second approving. The city of Port Lava's annual optional homestead tax exemption within the county. District for the twenty twenty three tax year. As presented and recommended by staff, all in favor say aye. You oppose, same sign? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, we have agenda item fourteen, consider resolution number R dash oh three, one, three, two, three, dash two, the city of Port Lava appointing a chief appraiser to calculate taxes for the twenty twenty three. Tax year. Cody.
Um, this is uh. Uh, form from the appraisal district where we need to designate. The Calhoun County Appraisal District as those that are going to calculate our taxes. Yeah, and this is an annual thing that just the formality that we need to.
We point Jesse or we point the appraiser district.
We appoint Jesse.
Jesse Hobel.
Designate a chief appraiser or his for for designate.
I'll make a motion that we appoint. My pal Jesse.
Okay, that's what's stated in the. Jesse Hobel.
In appointing a chief appraiser to calculate. And that's Jesse Hobel, he is a chief appraiser for Devon County.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Someone second.
Jim.
Yeah.
So we have a motion and a second approving. Resolution number R dash oh three, one, three, two, three, dash two, the city of Port Lava. Appointing a chief appraiser to calculate taxes for the twenty twenty three tax year as presented by staff. All in favor say aye.
Rosie later.
Oh, she didn't. Right, before the vote.
Okay. We'll just wait to Rosie. She should have waited a second. It's an emergency.
So the resolution is we're appointing the chief appraiser of the Calvin County Appraisal District.
Right.
Or is.
I didn't mean it.
That door slammed.
I tell you what, let's uh take a five minute break.
Sure. We'll come right back.
We'll come right back and.
And our gas rates are going up and up while you're sitting there with it. I can tell by looking at it. Yeah, it's going up. Tell me something that ain't going up. That my social security checks ain't didn't go up much. Inflation ate up anything plus.
At next sound.
And ask to be moved to the front.
What we got.
Thanks, Uncle Joe.
I thought we could speed through these pretty fast, but we haven't. But what I was saying.
Seventy five, yeah.
I mean, there's a, there's a. The market.
What are we going to do with this too?
It's just kind of a network pain, have a few vendors, have a.
It's kind of a little. It's together down, down apart. Let's take a break. So.
I've seen them. Dark for a while, just to get them used to this.
Major damage.
Riding my bicycle every day for my legs to keep circulation good, you know?
Yeah.
Go to the terrace.
It's, it wasn't that good. You know. Mind me, no, I don't need to, your body's old.
Just kind of whole body. You don't mind, but you're. I got tools.
Yeah.
Say, he's gonna use.
Farmer, we'd have to reset. I'll be somebody else, yeah, anytime.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, you get so crazy, that's second guessing yourself. It's scary. Letters and things like that.
This is that resolution.
Okay. He works out. And that boy makes so much money. He's working at a hospital now. Whatever rent or pay is and then some shifts they pay like. Yeah, I know, thirty thirty's back, he was a man, he had to live some.
This is why the nurse told me one time I was having bad words. And I said. And I asked him this, this is for the next.
Better, but I do know because I've talked to her before. A lot of times that they have to wait, you know, cer- certain tides, this and that. To be able to bring them in and then take them out. So they get delayed, you know, and plus it costs a lot of money when they get delayed. Bring them in or take them out because they have certain times they need to unload them. Get out of there, you know, but uh. I just think it'd be better to get them unloaded, let's get out of here. Or I'd have to have them all anchored up out there waiting, you know. I'd say like when we go out of Galveston. A lot of ships anchored out there. And you don't get them in. I mean, that's not really, you want to give. They're all back, oh, now Jack's gone. Hey, and and. You know, everybody sees. For all a bunch of robots. Reasons and try to make sure. And and I do.
So I do have a question and second. Oh, Ron, okay.
Oh, yeah, we got the boat.
I do have a motion in the second.
Okay, I will announce that we are returning from our recess and we are on agenda item number thirteen. Yeah, fourteen. And uh. We have a motion in the second and a vote pending, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Yeah. Alright, now we'll move to agenda item number fifteen, do you consider community wide housing analysis performed? Regarding impediments to fair housing for the city of Port La Vaca, Jody?
Um, this evening we have with this uh, Kevin Aruth. The Grant Works, who's gonna um, prepare this um, information for us. Um, that council needs to um. Accept. So Kevin, explain that.
Good evening, Mayor Council, the fair housing analysis that you have. Back in there is a new requirement. Always looking out for ways to create new paperwork. This is a. Main, the main purpose of this. Make you aware what your housing needs are. It's based currently on twenty ten census data. Full twenty twenty census data set is not out, so. There's a lag time. But based on. Data that we have available to us. It's showing that you do have. You are just barely lagging the curve. I think anecdotally, we know the last couple of years, it's probably uh. Uh, a little bit different than new data will reflect that probably. Next analysis comes out next year. But for. It's a requirement of your grant application that you. Uh, accept this. And this is. Right out, answer any questions you might have.
And basically, this was information you gleaned from the twenty ten census.
Correct.
We didn't go do any new studies or anything, just. Uh, compiled it from the, from the available information from the.
See, we don't have to.
No, we need to accept it. Receive and accept it.
I make a motion that we accept the report.
I make a motion, we've received the report. He said receive, and then she said receive and accept, you said accept, so hey, I. Receive part.
So let's clarify the motion, Tim, what is your motion? It referred to Mr. Tipton.
I make motion that we receive and accept.
Okay. That's the main motion to receive and accept. Okay, so we have a motion in the second uh. Receiving and accepting the community wide housing analysis uh. Form regarding impediments to fair housing for the city of Port La Vaca. Given the roots of that work, all in favor. Say aye. You oppose, same sign. None opposed, motion passes. Thank you. You guys are doing the right work.
Next one, G F two.
Alright. Resolution number R dash oh three one three two three dash three, the city of Port La Vaca declaring April is fair housing month.
Uh, this is something you've done. Probably for decades, every year.
Motion in the second. We have a motion in the second approving resolution number R dash oh three one three two three dash three, declaring April is. Fair housing month, all in favor say aye. Same sign. None opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now into the gas, comes that high gas right.
Number seventeen, consider resolution number. R dash oh three one three two three dash four, the city of Port La Vaca suspending the May. First twenty twenty three effective date for the proposal by Centerpoint. Energy Resources Corporation doing business at Centerpoint. Energy Intex and Centerpoint Energy Texas Gas South Texas Division to implement. Interim rip rate adjustments for gas utility investments in twenty twenty one and requiring delivery of resolution. Through the company and legal counsel. And. What does that mean?
What does that mean? Ultimately, this will hit. But all we're doing is postponing when our consumers will be hit with this rate increase. Now that we'll go to rate adjustments and. So forth, but. It's.
Hit with the rate. You say hit, that means hurt.
I'm gonna add anything. How long does this defer though?
They want to give all their employees a raise.
So anyway, uh, I think we've talked about this several times, so this is a statute allowing Centerpoint. And I think even electric company has actually got a similar statute. With three uh. Repair or slash, not repair, replacement of infrastructure to recover capital charges without having a full blown rate case. But that gets to the. Big giant. Process, a lot of you guys might remember the red book, blue book days, we come in here and say a nickel here, down there, we get back and forth, but uh. Anyway, it's a cycle uh, started in twenty nineteen, this is the. Be the fourth year we have to go before the railroad commission, it's. And had a full blown rate case. For uh, all of the interim. Rate cases in between.
And the only scary part is it's twenty twenty one, the year of Yuri.
With a full blown rate case for your.
So to be uh, it, what was it, uh, twenty nineteen is when we started this cycle. Uh, and it's a five and a half year cycle, so it will be coming up, so this is fourth, so. You can figure five plus and a half years, so that'd be six, and so.
Five, and then you have to validate all these increases and then ask for the whatever the next thing, okay.
Good work, Karen Portavaca, we got some uh, bad height, as we say it. Of our infrastructure, I've talked to many councils and city managers, they say, damn, I wish we could do this. And it's a, it's a good tool to keep our natural gas flowing reliable.
Ban gas stoves. I mean, the increase of more than ten percent, those, can you explain, I mean, what's, what's the major cost driver there?
Mandy got a book about that thing that we delivered. Two goes, actually a line item.
Can you summarize it?
So it's for replacing uh, or improving our systems throughout the South Texas area. So South Texas has one rate now, I think in twenty twelve, we went from individual towns. Uh, rates and literally go from Point Comfort to Port La Vaca and you'd have a different rate if you wouldn't see if you have additional. So they incorporated it all, which allows the opportunity to spread it out over a wider customer base. Um, in Port La Vaca specifically, we've ran a four inch down highway uh, to connect. Down there by Causeway, the sun vision. There you go, connect that, that was a, a really bad little point in our system. Uh, it allows us to actually bore across the highways or come up without charging your new hotels. Arm and leg and going all electric or whatever, so it's all kind of. Whenever we work on any kind of infrastructure at all, we no longer, we don't. Patch it, we don't tighten it, we replace it or replace a section of that time and so forth. So.
And remember, twenty one was, I mean, it's. To be said that that was the year of. Yuri's, winter storm Yuri's.
Yeah.
And that's. Yeah, but I probably had some damage, I would think.
The motion that we, it's. Approve the resolutions, then the nature of this effective. Increase.
Let's say no.
Approving resolution number oh three one. One three two three dash four. As presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Y'all have a good night.
Do you have a, a new replacement for? Ari Partita.
I don't know if you can replace AP, but. Though we did, we had Colton came in as a service tech, he decided he'd read a bill, the construction crew transferred over. Now we got a, a young man named Jack Shook coming in. Uh, we have him in training, we have a crazy training that we put him in school for like three and a half months straight. They have to stay in a hotel in the front office. And so it's strange relationship with his girlfriend, he tells me. Anyway, so Jack will get out, get another month or two of OTJ, as we just don't want to turn anybody loose working on our gas system. She's not very well trained. Big kid bilingual, uh, he's moved. To Port La Vaca, he's actually from uh, the Vanderbilt area, Loop Road, y'all familiar with that? We grew up uh, and everything, so. Looking forward to setting him up, to see him up and down roads for sure, we have Luis Pena out of, y'all see him every day here. Losing flashes, which he took Corosio Molina's place, but we lost about. I think near ninety years of experience between those two guys. Anyway, if you need anything at all, don't let us stay to call.
We did get a T M L alert just for y'all, so we got a T M L alert, that there is a bill pending. To remove the ability for cities to be able to get reimbursed their attorney fees on rate case. So.
Nice to, that's.
So that's to discourage this type of activity. Anyway, well, we'll just watch on it.
Okay, let's move on to agenda item number nineteen, consider second and final reading. D dash one dash twenty three, the city of Port La Vaca's many decoder board is. Part two appendix A, B rates, charges, chapter twenty two fire protection. Fire protection and protection, section twenty two conservative permits and providing an effective date, Derek.
Uh, Mayor Council, this is the. The final reading for the, the rate, rate fee changes uh, that were addressed to you all uh, last month uh, first reading. Um, have any changes to that since then?
We have motion in the second approving second final reading of ordinance G dash one dash twenty three, the city of Port La Vaca as presented. All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. None opposed. Motion passes, Sergeant passes. Right. Move to agenda item number twenty. Construction contract for new illuminated outdoor signs at the Bauer Community Center and City Hall.
Mayor Council, uh, this is the one for the Bauer and uh, the prices for the message board only, it's not replacing the whole. Whole, and everything, it's just a message board. Well, we're going with the new high tech uh, where you can change the, the message and everything through your cell phone or computer anywhere in the country.
I mean, so it's gonna rest the support structure. Are we wrapping the support structure with some kind of design, or are we just gonna look at it?
Right now, this is just to replace the message board.
So this is a lot higher than like SignWorks.
We, so we went out for bid because um, our local. Our local vendors in Victoria, we're not only in cooperative. We went out to bids and they were invited, but we did not receive bids from anybody. When I got um, the four bids we got.
We did get a bid from SignWorks.
We did not get a bid from SignWorks on this.
On this.
On this.
But you had a previous bid.
But that was not legal. We had to, had to go through the competitive bidding process and they didn't respond.
Well, they did respond in saying that they weren't able to bid on this.
Yes.
This time.
So they worked, they were not, uh, I don't know, was it SignWorks that? They, they were, didn't, they did not submit a bid.
So again, a local vendor was half the price of this cooperative bidding process, I mean, we.
This is not, this is not a cooperative bidding process, this is a competitive bid. That's why I went out for competitive bids because they were not on a cooperative. And to be fair and tried to give the locals an opportunity to bid. And to be fair and try to give the locals an opportunity to bid, we went and put this in the newspaper. I, I prepared a set of specifications, spent a weekend doing.
And I emailed it.
For bids and then they did not, they didn't respond.
Derek, how much are we paying for that, uh, message board?
Message board alone is, uh, if we go with the sixteen millimeter LEDs, uh, it's fifty, fifty-eight, four seventy-two. That's what the, the company that, um, I would recommend, you know, because they're, they're cheaper and they seem to be reputable.
That's for the Bauer? That's for the, that one's for the Bauer, yes.
Um, they do, they did offer a, a price for the ten millimeter. Um, included in that, that's gonna be an additional sixty-one, seventy-eight.
We, yeah, we talked about that and I mean, since, since we're already over budget, we weren't recommending that. The comparison, I, I talked to Russell Kane. He said his new sign is ten millimeter and it is really sharp. And I make, if our, our intent was to do a lot of graphics and stuff, we might be recommending that. But I don't think that's, the intent is more messaging, not necessarily like a big billboard type.
I still like charge for certain messages or not. Didn't they at one time charge if you wanted to put a message on there?
Yeah, I mean, it would be. But that's a bit regardless, I mean, it's a whole lot better than what we had.
So Caldo or whatever, they didn't wanna bid either.
I'm sorry?
Caldo or the, the, the one up on.
Decapadres or whatever they're called. Um, I emailed them the bid packet.
Did you call them? Did you talk to them?
I emailed the bid packet. I talked to them about, uh, the specifications and everything. And I told them I was gonna be emailing the package to them.
Okay.
Um, on SignWorks, you're talking about the, the coffee and so much more with these companies. When I talked to SignWorks, um, a couple of months ago, when I first started this deal, um. I asked him if he'd still honor that quote that he gave you three years ago. And he says, absolutely not. Prices have gone so much.
It's to Wayne, it wasn't to me, but.
I'm sorry?
It was to Wayne, not to me.
But uh, yeah, he said the price, I mean, just like everything else, it ended up so much. Uh, so that's why the sounds are costing much right now, would even be close. And the, the other competitive one was, uh, Sign, Sign Express out of Houston. And they were very shocked that they were, he, he kept saying that they got beaten this bid on the message board, but actually they didn't. But uh, what?
Well, Sign Express didn't submit a bid on it.
Well, it's not, well, they didn't, yeah, they didn't do the bid on. But anyway, they were, they're even saying how, that that is a very good price that Unity provided us.
And Compadre just didn't wanna bid, did you?
I sent on the bid packet.
Do they, do they, does it have any kind of like warranty on it or?
It's a five-year warranty on the parts. And then it's got a lifetime of membership for the, the software.
So when we send out a bid package, are we not allowed to call and follow up and say, hey?
We can, but we're not, not under an obligation to do it either.
Well, but yeah, that's why we always spend so much money.
We can reject these and we can try again.
Yeah, I did call them and I did let them know that I was gonna be emailing the bid packet. If they have any questions, they can give me a call. Um, and I did have a couple of the companies, they did call me and we discussed it further, just to make sure we're comparing apples to apples with each company.
Cause they were gonna wrap the toast and, I mean, they had a lot.
Yeah, but, but, I mean, we, we, we were not asking for that bid. All we want is, is the message board.
Yeah, and once they.
They'll do that later on, but right now we just, you know, we only had fifty thousand dollars budgeted. And, and I think all that was, we were looking at what, seventy something thousand dollars. So we're just, you see, just replace the message board.
I mean, you have a comment? I mean, thirty years of selling messages, kinda take to pay that back.
I haven't seen any of the bits, so I'm pretty confident on the bits. Just know that the sign needs to work.
Sign needs what?
The word. Sign needs to work.
I do think it would be good, cause I know I've driven by there before and you see a lot of cars.
I mean, this is all I can get for fifty thousand dollars.
Wrapped on the sign, it is luminal and it's, it seems to be in perfectly good condition. Uh, the color of the paint matches the building. I don't know if that's what, one of the concerns is.
Okay.
But um, I did also get, uh, this company did provide me with the cause for painting the wrap. Um, you know, different o- other options that if we wanted to look at doing something else with it, the other, uh, further improvements. But we just specifically wanted to get the message board fixed right now. Just, just let it get it up and going again. Been five years.
What about the little sign underneath the message board? Is that gonna get?
Yeah, no, the, the side part underneath, uh, we definitely looked at the rest of that, uh, it's not even costing much.
Well, I mean, it's been a year, right?
I mean, we don't, I mean, just to clarify, I mean, that these are separate bids. We don't have to award. One, I'm sorry, we don't have to award that either of them, but um, the second one on the city hall sign is, is a really good price. Um, they do offer a fifteen hundred dollar discount if you want to vote, but that's, that's. That, well, it's in your packet. Under the recommendation, it's on the, your city hall, you know, we've got the three entrances to city hall. And the proposal, um, the, the phase two remodeling of city hall or upgrades. Is upgrade the sign on the three entrances to a backlit sign. It's in your packet. It, it, there's, it's the seal and it says city of Port Lebaka, city hall. Um, I mean, the options, we, we, we'll put, we can put the old signs back up and not worry about it. Or we'll put the old signs back up and, um. Look that we, you know, budgeting for the fixture, cause this isn't budget, budgeted, because we spent the budget in the, what was awarded already. To get for construction, it wasn't less for the signs. Or we can don't.
Keep going.
Yeah.
Wrapping for this sign plus this.
That would be, uh, that's, that's. With the eighty, eighty seven thousand.
Since we were going out for bids, I mean, uh, we, the city hall sign, we figured was gonna be less than fifty thousand. We could have just gotten pricing, but since we were going out for bids, we just included that in the bid package as a separate bid. And took two separate bid items. You don't have to award, um, one or the other.
So the twenty-nine thousand, we had leftover money from barefoot?
No, I just, I'm saying we don't, we have to come out of reserve, reserves, because there was. Um, we actually had to put a little bit of reserves in, um, the three hundred thousand that was, or two hundred, two hundred and eighty thousand, I think that was budgeted. For city hall, they used to.
Is there a picture of it?
Yeah, there's a. In the packet. Yeah. And their, their, um, sides, their backlit.
With LED, so.
LED backlit.
The individuality by signs.
Those, I think those are. This would be.
That would be the maintenance on the lights and. On these lights, when the light goes out.
That's a trick question, Tim.
It's, it's still, it's a five-year warranty on it. Um.
Oh, really?
LEDs, they last long.
Oh, yeah.
They generally do, but.
Hey, you know.
I mean, I guess it's been a, you know, a year over a year trying to get somebody to bid on the sign. I guess I just get a little disappointed when we go out for bids that we don't. Sometimes our local guys are busy with stuff and it, you know, it doesn't hurt to just call them and say, hey, the bids are coming in. You guys gotta get your bid in. I mean, that's, that's what we did and that's how we got such a good deal on the, the harbor. We just made a call, right? So, I mean, I, I mean, I just would like to encourage staff to do that.
They, they did email me and tell me that they were not interested in bidding at this time.
All right, I'm signing one.
So, so SignWorks.
Okay. I make a motion, we accept it as listed.
So all of it or? Sixty millimeter in, uh, city hall. Both, both signs.
Let, let me ask you another question. Do we have kind of special coverage on that sign or, I mean, that's a lot of money for the sign. I was wanting to make sure, it's just a question. I mean.
Yes.
Sometimes certain things are not covered, you know, and you gotta make sure it's covered. And it'll get knocked out and then you'll go, oh, yeah. And they're like, oh, that wasn't covered.
It's covered.
Yeah, cause I mean, that's fifty-eight thousand dollars. I mean, we're fixing to come up on storm time again, so.
It's covered, you know.
Daddy, is the sixteen millimeter, like, is it older technology? Is there, is there something older? No, it's not older technology. It's just, um, it's not quite as, uh, sharp as the ten millimeter.
Seen Russell. It's, it's.
So I mean, and.
Pretty graphic.
Yeah.
I, I mean, my, if we're gonna spend that kind of money, we might as well spend six months, if you want it to really look right.
I mean, the ten millimeter would, I guess what I'm saying, the ten millimeter would, would open up more options. Um, I think in reality, what our intention for the use of the sign, I think sixteen millimeter, millimeter will be adequate. But if we went ahead and spent. Not dynamic. Six thousand. But on occasion, use the more, it's a sharper.
So we're gonna be, uh, selling advertising, selling space now, right? We're not gonna just do it.
We would, yes. When we, in the past, historically, you had an event there. You wanted to just do a little birthday message, it's like twenty-five dollars a day to have your message up there.
Okay.
How much Russell charged? Cause I know he does.
I don't know, I don't know.
He didn't tell me.
Well, I mean, can we change this? I mean, I, I like where Jerry's going. I mean, for six thousand dollars. Once we decide, we don't wanna shortchange ourselves, but why don't, why don't we turn this into a more lucrative proposition? And actually market this as advertisement and get some money back.
Yeah, that's, that's a great idea, but.
The message boards. You know, one, one billboard company really wanted to go digital for that purpose. But I think when you have somebody that's having an event that's upcoming, you know, the little, you can have your daily prize. You can also have a weekly or a monthly prize and recoup some of the money. And in that case, I do think, for the difference of cost now, I do think the ten millimeter would be better. Just go ahead and bite the bullet.
We don't.
Just because it opens it up for different graphics down the road or maybe we don't need this day, but. I'd hate to be three years down the road sometimes we are in our.
Low definition. If we're gonna do it though, it needs, I agree with Tim, it needs to be marketed where we're actually getting something back off of it and it's not just sitting there.
Need to do it right and if money is, which coming out of, uh, reserves, we can readjust that and consider.
When we go over budget for next year, say, well, we've already spent part of next year's budget on this.
You don't, I mean, if you're gonna advertise, yes, yes, probably. But I'm just, but our hotel, motel tax is not that lucrative right now.
I, I think we ought to just go with the better quality. I mean, resolution, if we're gonna do that, though, I mean.
So that would be. The recommendation that the staff made was exactly, it was the sixteen millimeter?
Well, and, and that was, again, based upon, you know, my understanding of what, what we were looking at. We weren't really talking about maybe selling stuff and I wasn't, I wasn't.
Jim, do you?
Trying to look basically text with some, some graphics, but not a lot of. Not like billboard to where somebody draws a PDF and, so you can do that. You can make a PDF and, and paste it up there. But a lot, a lot of those, even at ten millimeter may be hard to read, but surely if it's like that, you would want at least.
Sixteen, spend the fifty eight or spend the plus six, okay? Well, you're, you're gonna do that regardless. So if you market it a little bit, you can at least know you can get your six grand difference back to what I'm getting at.
So can we amend the motion, Mr. Ward, to include item one A also?
Just like here, this, you know, a couple of people have said it. We're just dragging things out here.
So you amended your main motion to.
The, the, the main motion is amended to include one, one, one A and two.
Plus the six.
Plus. That's one A.
One A.
And two. And. And to provide direction to find a way to market.
Five dollars is no.
What would you like to say?
We're on the verge here.
What, all I'm gonna say is for the future in thinking long-term, long-range. You know, these, these signs, which I, I'm the one who brought up giving the dang ten millimeter, but, you know. In the future, we may have to deal with regulating those lines up and down thirty-five. Well, there, we already, I mean, we, there's already regulation in our sign ordinance limits. You can have flashing lights and it can't, you know. And because you, you can't have them be distracting to.
Yeah, we, we have a.
So it, that's what I'm saying. I mean, the, the sign can be up there, but as far as, uh, animation, you gotta be careful with that. Or it, it, you know, you might get outside of even what's in our ordinance right now. But that's just for the. Don't worry about it and don't worry about selling ad space, cause like in Victoria, cause I had to analyze this one time. Is they don't allow you to, well, not every sign can sell space. So the, only the specialized billboards, like, uh, other people's private business billboards. Cannot sell space.
Well, I believe in our.
State statute on that. Fortunately, we're a big brother if we can do it. Okay, to call the question.
Okay, so Jim has a main motion to award.
Fifty.
One, one A and two.
And accept three, since we're doing those.
Yeah, except the three in amount of ninety-two thousand, four hundred thousand.
Do we have a second? Yeah, the second is amended.
And so a total of ninety-two, four hundred?
Yes.
The reduction, the.
Yes. Unity Science Systems LLC.
Okay. That's my right, that's yours.
Systems.
Okay.
Good motion, Captain Ward.
We have a motion and a second.
That was good. As presented, Unity Science Systems LLC, amount of ninety-two thousand.
What an order.
Y'all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
Sign and none opposed, motion passed. You sidetracked something. Moving right along. Agenda item number twenty-one, consider the recommendation planning board for a three lot preliminary and final flats. De La Rosa subdivision, CAD pin number one, eight, oh, two, five. And CAD pin number one, eight, oh.
Two, generally located in the corner of one industry, center street.
Uh, council, mayor and council, uh, this is a final. Uh, for the preliminary and the final for, um. So it's on the corner of, uh, one, eight, and one industry and center street. What you can tell in the, in your packet. So it's on the corner of, um, Juanita and Juanita Street and Center Street, what you can tell in the, in your packet. Um, the two property owners want to sell the back half of their lots for this, for the gentleman's one that's subdivided. Uh, he's planning on using it for storage of his, he's a, he does concrete work. And so he's wanting to store equipment, uh, some of his equipment there and some of the material, um, I'm gonna be actually working there. But I'm doing a carport for right now and then he was, they moved the tent, uh, building house there in the, in the future.
So what are we approving?
Final flat.
Final flat.
How far out of the future?
I can't answer that.
That's your district, Jerry?
Yeah.
That's mine. So moved.
Uh, mostly it's not gonna.
Alright, so.
The planning board had quite a bit of discussion in there.
So we have motion, is that gonna approve in the planning board directly? I made the motion, I don't know who said.
They had a lot of discussion on it, but they didn't, but they approved it anyway.
They had a lot of.
They don't, must not live in my district.
Well, uh, the motion was to approve the plan. Uh, they had, that they did have some concerns about the use.
Yeah. That's the thing. I mean, we're working extra hard to really to clean the area up, you know, and, and I'm just.
I mean, whatever they do still has to combine work.
Yeah. But lay down.
Yeah. I think he's planning on putting a fence around the property.
That's the lack of zoning.
Yeah, I know, I know.
It's a ministerial lack for y'all to.
Yeah, I've been talking about zoning for thirty years.
I'm pretty close to getting my preliminary recommendation done.
Good, I'd glad to hear that. I hope I don't die before we get to the back. I can't believe how long we've been talking about zoning and it just, it goes away.
We have a three lot preliminary and final flat.
Only you want it or not, you need to do it. We need to do it.
Located at the corner of Juanita and Center Street, all in favor, say aye. For the same sign, recently none oppose, motion passes. Move to agenda item number.
So we're on spring break, right?
Consider the recommendations of the planning board for a final flat, E V S P L. On a month, LLC subdivision located north of State Highway thirty-five and East of Village Road. The identified, uh, for this site is ninety-three, one fifty, I guess that's the CAD pin number.
Yes.
With parcel containing two point one eight acres situated in the Alejandra as far as the subdivision. Abstract number twelve, town, county Texas, and being part of the same property shown as three point oh seven nine acres and express. And Port Lavaca subdivision, Eric.
Eric, this is, uh, the final flat for the property adjacent or next to, uh, Waterburg. That proposed motel, it's one to come in, the third one.
I think it lasted. Yeah, last month the council approved both. So this is fine.
This is all move.
Second.
It's a matter.
Sorry, Gary and Jim. Still. We have a motion and a second approving the final flat, uh, the P V S P L on a month. LLC subdivision located at thirty-five. Highway thirty-five and the Village Road as presented, all in favor, say aye. Any oppose, same sign. Oppose, motion passes. And we'll move to agenda item number twenty-three, consider the request of the Har- the Harvard Children's Alliance and Victims Center. Closure free adjacent to two fifteen West Railroad. For the annual hosting of the Celebrate the Child picnic on Saturday, April first, twenty twenty-three. Nine AM to two PM, the streets to be closed are North Benavides from the rear of the Library Drive. The West Railroad and West Railroad from Benavides to North End Street.
You have a lot of streets closed on April first.
Okay, I second. Okay, we have a motion and a second approving the request of the Harvard Children's Alliance and Victims Center. Streets as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Make a motion, we adjourn, second and oppose, motion passes.
We have a motion and second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Any oppose? And oppose, motion passing.
Propose you can. Sweep or something, whatever.
Thank you very much, you're very good.
So much.